Good evening and welcome to this November fifteenth meeting of the New London Planning Board. Do we have the minutes?
I believe so, and we also just need to remind people that they're being recorded.
So, I just want to let everybody know that you are on candid camera. This is being recorded, so.
You're speaking your.
Hi, oh, this is being recorded and I just wanted you to know that. So, our first order of business is to pass the review and pass the minutes for our meeting on October eleventh. Is there a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
So moved. Second.
Second, thank you. Any further, is there any corrections or additions that people want to make to those minutes? Then all those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we also need to do the, we didn't do the September twenty-seventh minutes at the last meeting, so we just need to do those.
Okay. So, is there a motion to accept the minutes for the meeting we had on September twenty-seventh?
So moved.
Okay, thanks. Any questions or comments about that from the board, or corrections or additions? Then hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes for the September twenty-seventh meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, in our order of business, we usually pause at this point and offer the public that is here the opportunity to speak to us about anything that's not on our agenda. So if you're here to talk about a particular issue, or to listen to a discussion about a particular issue that's on the agenda, that's fine. But if you're here because you want us to be aware of something that's not on the agenda, now is the time to speak. Well, then hearing none, we'll surge forward. Thank you. So the first thing that's on our agenda is the public hearing site plan review for the applicant for Twin Pines Housing Trust. And who wants to speak to that? Thank you. And please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Andrew Winter, Executive Director of Twin Pines Housing Trust. Delighted to be here this evening. We're actually, as we indicated to Adam and earlier last week, we're going to be asking for a continuance at this point on our application. When we came before you last month, we showed you a concept, we showed you, you know, a plan, we showed you an additional concept, and I think in the course of that conversation indicated that we were getting construction pricing in and were, you know, kind of looking at simplifying the plan where we could. And as part of that, we want to take a little bit of a half step back at this point and spend time with our team refining the plan, so that what we present to you, certainly as our final application, is as complete as possible and isn't just a pretty picture, but it's something that we can finance and build. So with that, we would ask for a two-month continuance to, I believe, the January meeting, and I don't know that one off the top of my head, but that is the request that we're making. If there is anybody here that was hoping to speak either in favor or opposition, I'm sorry to disappoint you tonight. We did try to get the word out to as many of you as possible. The fact that there's not a hundred people here is probably a good sign that we didn't get, we got the word out to at least some people, and my apologies that we didn't get all of you. But we do want to take the time to do it right and be thoughtful about it, so I'm here to make that request of you today.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a request before us to extend this, which will be extended to the meeting on January tenth. Any questions or comments about that? Then, is there a motion to move this particular issue forward to the meeting we're going to have on January tenth?
So moved.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Any comments about this from the public? Then all those in favor of the board of extending what is number four on our agenda, the Twin Pines Project, to January tenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No, thank you. Thank you.
And just for anyone who does watch this on YouTube or here, typically notices are not sent out for continuance. Given the lag time here, we might actually just send a regular mail notice for January tenth, so that folks stay up to date. I think there's a lot of people that are interested. It won't come certified mail as a typical notice would be, but I think we'll just send out a notice. And Andrew, if you're okay with that?
Okay.
And we can wait until, you know, mid-December to sort of make sure that that works and get that sent out.
I also want to take a moment to just appoint David Royal as the substitute for Jeremy Bonin, who's a regular member of this committee, and I also want to appoint Emily Campbell as the substitute for Joe Cubitt, who's a regular member of this committee. So they'll be voting members in anything that we do as we move along. For those of you who came to deal with this, we'll take a seventh inning stretch and you can leave now if you want to.
Or a one-seventh inning stretch.
Thank you for coming.
Just said free beer in the lobby.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next issue on our agenda, which is the New London Hospital Association. And they're going to talk with us about the ongoing planning for their.
Am I allowed to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But please introduce yourself.
Okay. I was just wondering if it's the next item on the agenda, because we didn't address the project, did we?
Oh, it's about the.
Yes.
Your transfer, right, of the air oxygen tank from one place to another on the property.
Correct. For the record, my name is Hazem Donnie. I'm a civil engineer with CHA Consulting, here with Mr. Scott Ireland on behalf of the New London Hospital. And we are here for our final site plan review application, and our project consists of the removal of an existing above-ground bulk storage oxygen tank that is currently located in this area onsite. We are relocating the oxygen tank and concrete pad approximately a hundred feet along the existing edge of pavement. New conduits will be installed from the existing building to the new location of the concrete pad. The existing conduits feeding the existing oxygen tank will be abandoned and capped in place. Any disturbed area will be loomed and seeded, and pavement will be repaired as needed. Our project is straightforward. We will install some bollards around the oxygen tank per the manufacturer requirements. Flood security lights will be installed as well, and a small concrete loading area will be installed in front of the oxygen concrete pad. And we are also asking for a waiver from the submission requirement of a boundary survey. Our position is that our project is very minor and consists of an internal site modification, and we believe that a boundary survey of a ten-plus acre site is not needed for this site, and we respectfully ask for that waiver from the board.
So, can you just, it would be helpful, I think, at least for me, if nobody else. If you kind of pointed on your, what is that, I know where it was, where is it going to?
So here's the existing location.
Right.
And it's hard to follow, but here's the existing edge of pavement. If you follow it, it will be installed in this position.
So closer to the.
Closer to the building.
Helicopter train.
Closer to what?
Sort of towards where the helicopter lands.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, I see.
Here is County Road.
Yeah.
And here's the existing entrance, and on your left, once you enter the site, here's the existing urgent care facility that was permitted probably two years ago. And then further down to the right, here's the existing oxygen tank, and we will just locate it approximately a hundred feet to this location.
Okay, thank you.
And for the board, I met with the fire chief today. He didn't have any concerns about the tank. I think they've already met with the contractors at some point, and so that department heads are all satisfied. The two facts, for the finding of facts, the tank is a use that's already in place, so there's no change in use, and that the tank layout meets the site plan regulations and the setbacks of the zoning ordinance.
Anybody else from the board have any questions? Paul?
Paul, he mentioned lighting. Can we just have a little explanation on how that's going to be?
So basically, there are security floodlights that will be installed on eight-foot posts. They wouldn't affect any neighbors, and they will have minimal impact to the site lighting. Near this existing oxygen tank, there is a light pole. That's why probably there was no security lights needed, but in this location, there is no light pole nearby, so they would need some sort of a security light in this area.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Then, is there a motion to accept this proposal as presented? We have one movement, and is there a second? Okay, thank you, Dave. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions the board has? Okay. Then all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is, we're going to talk with people from the Colby Sawyer, who are going to talk with us about a conceptual proposal that they have with regard to development of the college.
Good evening, folks. I'm Sue Stubner, President of Colby Sawyer. With me this evening is Karen Boldwall, Vice President for Finance and Administration at the College, as well as Bill Wilson from HGA Architects. And we're here to present the conceptual drawings for the college's new building for the School of Nursing and Health Sciences. The building is an essential part of our expansion in nursing and the health sciences as part of our, up higher? Okay, sorry. Is that better? Okay. As part of our partnership with Dartmouth Health. As you may know, we're increasing the size of our undergraduate nursing program. We've added a highly successful accelerated BSN program. We've added an MSN degree that offers three tracks, and this coming fall, we'll be offering our first doctorate in nursing practice. The site we have selected removes a building that could not be renovated, and is really the only site on campus that's feasible for this building. The first floor will benefit all students with an anatomy and physiology lab spaces, study spaces, faculty offices, and a coffee bar. The second floor is dedicated to nursing and includes state-of-the-art simulation space, debriefing classrooms, and faculty offices. And the penthouse will contain the majority of the mechanicals for the building, and that's pretty much the overview. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks have. I guess the only other point I want to mention is that the building will be completely funded by donations, and we do have a pathway there, just as the athletic pavilion was funded by donations as well.
You're going to raise the roof or something, aren't you, so to speak?
The height of the building?
The height of the.
Yes, we will be going to the zoning board on December sixth to ask for a variance on the height of the building.
So how tall?
Fifty-two, fifty-two feet.
Going from thirty-eight, I think it is?
How high was Reiko?
Thirty-five. Wow, thirty-five is not cap, too.
Thirty-five is your cap.
Yeah.
But then the adjacent buildings are already over the thirty-five?
Yes, several are.
We're hoping to bring that to the zoning, having some of those heights verified by Horizon's engineering, but there are several buildings surrounding them that are accessible to the town.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Sure.
Is the coffee bar going to be open to the public? I mean, you know, people going to Hogan, would they be able to utilize it?
Yeah, I would think so. It'll be part of our dining services and extension of them, and we certainly allow public in our dining hall and in the pub, so I can't see why not. A quick coffee after working out.
Right, yeah. And a muffin.
You know, most people say I don't need a telephone, so I don't need a microphone. Anyway, have you.
Do you need to speak into the mic?
Thank you, dear.
You're welcome.
Have you met with Chief Lyon about the height of the building? Is he going to have a concern about?
We met with the fire inspector.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, and he was okay with the height.
And I did speak in passing with Jay about it today when we were talking about the hospital. You know, in general, their feeling is that if a building is sprinkled, then it's not as important to them, you know, their apparatus can go that tall anyways. He also shared that years ago, there was a need to vent through the roof in the event of a fire in order to clear out smoke, and there have been some changes in how they perform venting. Obviously, like he used the example of a seven-story building, if the fire's on the second floor, you can't, you know, vent through the roof, and now there are techniques to vent through the wall, whereas it's not as important to make sure that you're really capped at a three-story minimum. So he seemed comfortable with it, but certainly I think they will write some sort of supportive letter for the ZBA proceedings.
Are you using any solar?
Yeah, we are exploring solar, and it's our hope to do so.
Perfect. Great.
How many square feet?
Twenty-five.
And how many floors, three?
Two stories plus a basement.
And a penthouse.
And a penthouse.
It certainly aesthetically is an improvement over what was there.
Yes, it's definitely an improvement over what was there.
Paul?
Yes, Paul?
Just point of interest, is there something functional about the nursing school that requires almost twenty feet of headspace, or is it aesthetic, or?
I think it's really more an aesthetic than a requirement. You know, I think they do have an awful lot of equipment that they need, but I think it's more of an aesthetic than an absolute need.
Thank you.
Just have to use the microphone for the recording.
I'm Bill Wilson, architect, HGA. And just in response to the floor-to-floor height, some of the rooms are fairly large, and if you had a nine-foot floor, it would feel like a bowling alley. And so it just is, that's part of the aesthetics, but it lets in more natural light, and it also allows for mechanical distribution. So it's a robust building that's supposed to be there for a hundred years, and it's good to have that fourteen-foot floor-to-floor height.
Thanks, Bill.
How is it that you intend to.
How is it that you intend to heat it?
The question is how will the building be heated, and it's heated and cooled, it's an all-electric building, and so they're going to use hydronics, in other words, piping is going to carry fluids around, and then they heat and cool the elements during the
Are you using a heat pump, or strictly?
It's a new-generation heat pump, and I've never used it before, but our engineer recommends it as the latest thing. But yes, it is a, it's a form of a heat pump.
So there's going to.
There'll be a lot of structure below ground?
Oh, it's about a third of the basement. The basement is a third of the footprint of the building.
So, the basement is a third of the footprint of the building? Are you going to have a lot of cantilever angles, or?
Well, it's, in other words, we're not excavating the full footprint. We're just excavating a third of the footprint. These drawings show it as two-thirds, and it's actually ending up, we only need a third, it's very compact. So it's electrical gear, the HVAC gear, and then the chillers are in the penthouse. The actual condensing units are in the penthouse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay. Any questions from the public?
When do you intend to have it finished, and what is the capacity?
We hope to have it finished by fall of 2024, or open for our students by then. It may be finished a little bit earlier than that, but doors open in fall of 2024. Capacity, just in terms of number of students and faculty offices, I'm not quite sure how to estimate that.
The headcount in the building is about sixty people per floor, so it's about a hundred and twenty people.
So Sue, if you get the variance on December sixth, I anticipate you'd apply pretty soon after that for your application?
Yes.
Okay. So we'd hopefully have you on sometime in January would be the goal?
Yeah, would that be, would you go final on that, or?
I think so. I don't think, I mean, it's replacing a building that was there, so it's not as if it's a totally new concept to have a building at the start of the campus, so, I mean, obviously it's the board's prerogative, but I think that that's a reasonable request to not do the preliminary design review.
I have more questions. Is there a net increase in the water usage and a net increase in the need for particular sewage capacity or anything like that? What is the net effect after Reinhold was torn down and this building will be built on the town systems?
Karen. I don't really think there should be a dramatic increase in usage, because Reiko also had two floors, roughly the same number of facilities, and if we were to estimate the number of students that would be in there, would only be slightly less at one time, because remember, we've got students rotating in and out for classes. So in terms of usage during the day, I don't anticipate that it will be far different than what we've already had on campus. It's not, it wasn't a residence hall, it was also an academic building. This is an academic building, so it should be similar in use.
I think a guess is not good enough. I think there should be an analysis that's done for the board when we finally review things.
Okay. Well, I mean, and we've also committed through other meetings that we will be in touch with the other precincts, Springfield, New London Water Precinct as well, so we'll be doing all of that. But in terms of usage to usage on campus, it should be fairly similar, but we can absolutely get that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions from the public? Well, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to see you at some time.
It's not so exciting, well, see zoning, and then we'll see.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll now do another seventh inning stretch, if you'd like to leave, now's the time to do it.
Vahan, were you here for the Twin Pines? Is that what you're trying to?
Yes.
Vahan, were you here to see the Twin Pines? So you missed it, but I can give you a little update. They were not ready to move forward tonight, so they asked for a continuance till January tenth.
Thank you.
So, here we are, and we have one more thing that's not on the agenda, but that we have to do this evening, and that is that I would like to resign as the chair. I had no intention of doing this for as long as I've been doing it, and I thought that I'd do it for two terms, which would have ended last year at the town meeting, and, but then things didn't quite work out. The first thing I did was I spoke with Jeremy, and because as the vice chair, I thought, well, I'll tell him what I'd like to do, and then if he's interested in the position, ultimately it becomes an action that you all have to take, but that would be grand. Well, he wasn't interested, to make a long story short. At the time that I was talking with him about this, he was thinking about kind of reconstructing his practice, his architectural practice, and that he had hoped, and I don't know whether that's going to happen now, but at the time, he had hoped that he was going to be able to hire an assistant who was going to be able to essentially run the organization, and he had bought himself, or was in the process of buying himself, a nice Airstream and a big truck, and he and his wife were heading off across North America, I think, so that was his design. Unfortunately, in the meantime, his, the person that he hired to be, the person that was going to be the director of the architectural practice, has become very ill and resigned. So I'm not quite sure where that's all at, but in any event, that's as much as I knew. And he was really very clear about the fact that he was not interested in serving any further than the next town meeting, which is when his term would expire, and I have talked to him in the meantime, and he said, yeah, he said, I think that's a good thing to stick with. So then I thought, okay, I'm still trying to get myself out of this job. So then I turned to Tim, and I said, okay, Tim, you're the next officer in line, you know, would you be interested in this wonderful opportunity to be the chair of the planning board? And at the time, Tim was changing jobs, and he was going to work for a different firm and needed some time, so I said, well, if you're willing to do this work, this position, then I'll certainly be willing to stay until you're ready to do it. So that's the reason why I'm still here. And, but I'm hoping that you will, you know, accept the nomination and make Tim the chair, and then I will continue to be part of this, be a member like yourselves, but I'm not going to run the meetings, and even though I've enjoyed all my meetings with Adam, I won't have to meet with him as often, so. So, you know, I've, this position has an interesting history, if you are familiar with When I first joined the board, and I'm blocking his name, but the chair had been the chair for something like fourteen years. And I remember thinking to myself, well, I'm not interested in doing that, that's for sure. And previously, though, there was another chair on this board several years ago, who served, I think, in the neighborhood of eighteen years. And then there was another chair, you know, longevity was just expected. Well, I'd like to break that and say that after two terms, and you know, frankly, personally, since there's nobody here, we can talk, I have always believed that there's a, that you can do something for a certain period of time, and you have. of time and you have to, but there's a time limit. And I felt like two terms, that was good. And then I'd return to the board and do what you people all do and serve out my term and then leave. I'll tell you a quick story, personal story. When I became the CEO of New Hampshire Hospital, I was there probably less than a week, and I got a phone call from the fellow who was the president of Concord Hospital. It was a wonderful guy. And the way in which the state hospital was operated was it provided all these psychiatric services, but the ancillary health services that were necessary for us to be a hospital, rather than the state replicating all of that, we purchased a lot of those services from Concord Hospital. So laboratory and lots of other things, we purchased those under contract with Concord Hospital. So obviously, you know, the new CEO at Concord Hospital was probably interested in meeting with me because he didn't want me to change any of that, you know. So anyhow, so I went up to Concord Hospital and I had lunch with him. He's a wonderful guy. And about, I don't know, we were probably a quarter of the way through lunch, and he just looked at me and he said, so how long are you going to stay? And I said, gee, I just got here, you know. But his point was very well taken. He said, you know, he said, those of us in positions like this, he said, you have to have an exit strategy and you have to know when you, what kinds of things are going to be such that you will not tolerate them and you're going to leave, you know. That's not the case here, but it could be very well the case at New Hampshire Hospital, so, because you're dealing with the legislature that, you know, is all over the place. So anyhow, that was his piece of advice to me. So I've always, I've always kind of believed that when you're in a position of some responsibility, there's a limit to that and you have to know when it's time to leave. Well, it's time for me to leave. So I would like to become a member just like the rest of you, and I would like to suggest that you, we nominate Tim to become the chair.
So is, do we have to accept your resignation?
I don't really know how to go about this.
You have to make a nomination. So someone's term goes until they either resign or you nominate somebody to fill the place. So if you are looking to make a nomination for Tim to be the chair, and there's a second and a vote?
Okay, so I am simultaneously saying that the motion is we accept Paul's resignation and we nominate Tim to be chair of the planning board.
Yes. And I just want to be clear that it's resignation as chair, that he is still staying on the same member.
Right. With mixed emotion, I must say.
So any comments? There's a second from Paul. Any comments for anybody? Well, I can't vote, but all those in favor, please say aye.
Well, I have a comment. Those are some big shoes to fill. Tim?
I'm very well aware, yeah.
We'll get your shoe size.
Thank you.
I want to add one thing. I would say, thank you, Paul, for being the chairman, and thank you, Tim, for agreeing to step into that role. It's not easy and Paul, you've done an amazing job of navigating the difficult times. So thank you very much on behalf of the town. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just would say one thing, you know, we forget, at least I do, when you stop and think about it, but I've been kind of thinking about this and I looked back and I thought, you know, one of the, and I wish, you know, Jeremy had been here this evening, because one of the big things that we did was to rewrite the master plan. And I think, you know, and Jeremy led that process for us, and I think he did a wonderful job. We all did a wonderful job, though, because that was really a communal operation. And, you know, we got tremendous response from the community in terms of, you know, just thought of a shot of a thousand returns on our questionnaire and loads of people came to meetings. And we produced a very nice document that we are continuing to pursue and amend and improve. So that's probably from the point of view of organizational management, a very important thing to have is, you know, they often call them vision statements or something like that, but it's a very important thing to have, some sense of what the parameters are and where you're going and where you're trying to get to. So the job that all of you did at that time and the nice response we got from the town was really, was really wonderful. I think the other big, just from my perspective, the other big thing that we've been involved with, which feels like forever, is the hospital, you know, where, you know, they certainly took their, are taking their time and we keep, you know, having them come back for this, that, or the other thing. Maybe sooner or later, they'll actually get something built in that property, but I hope so.
Before the timber grows back.
Yeah, right. That's right, from all the clearing that was done. So anyhow, well, Tim?
Wait, I meant, we haven't voted.
Oh, you haven't? Oh, sorry.
Don't jump the gun.
So all those in favor of accepting the nomination of Tim as chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks. Thanks, everyone, for that, and also thank you, Paul, for all that you've done. As Paul, the other Paul pointed out, I have big shoes to fill, so I will do my best. Thank you.
Okay. So anyhow, well, now you're in charge.
I can make it easy and do the wrap-up. So just a reminder, the zoning amendments, our next meeting is December 1st. So we will meet again at 7:30 on Thursday, December 1st, and also hold the December 8th at 7:30. You know, I think we will get pretty deep into the weeds on the housing stuff on the 1st, and then on the 8th, perhaps we could tie up any of the other zoning amendments that we want to put forth. And then at our meeting on the 13th of the month, we would actually formally vote to move those to public hearing on January 10th.
And you don't have to take notes on what I'm going to say now, okay?
You are being recorded.
Oh, I'm being recorded.
Oh, I love it.
I'll behave. I do think that the, that issue, that process that we've been involved with, with the housing group, is important. It's important for the town. I think personally, now I'm just, now, okay, now I'm speaking just as a regular old member of the committee. I think there are things that an audafather had to fly, so to speak. There are things that we're going to have to think seriously about as to whether or not we want them in that plan, that they are recommending that we may want to not do. And when we get down to the careful analysis of that, we can talk about it then. Yes, David?
Having attended all those 7:30 meetings and doing a lot of, and doing a lot of listening and hearing some of the discussions that were taking place, I did meet with Adam this week, and I said, I'm not sure that we need to rush into making all those zoning changes all at once, that I think that we need to carefully discuss which ones we can look into and vote maybe now and not all of them, because I think there's a lot of discussion that has taken place about density and 30% and 40%, and I'm not so sure we're ready to just take all of them and say, yes. And I think we need to be careful and take our time and take each one individually and see which ones that are needed to pass for the moment, and then let's see how things go and then wait for the others. Thank you.
I think that's a good point. I mean, I think that's what we need to do at our meeting on December, whatever it is.
1st.
1st. Yeah, so I think that's a well-taken point. That's important. There's one more thing that I failed to do in my closing remarks, so I'd like to have an addenda. I want to thank Adam. This thing wouldn't work without him.
No. I think the same thing with the chairs, so.
You know, so, you know, you've done a wonderful job, you really have. And he has brought to us, you know, a whole breadth of experience that he's had in other kinds of similar sorts of operations in some of the towns in the Upper Valley, which is very helpful. But he thinks about things that, you know, sometimes I don't recognize, so that's very helpful when he does that.
I'm counting on that.
If I can say one more thing?
Thank you, sure.
Not on the record, please?
David, you're being recorded. I want to remind you, this is going on YouTube, so I don't.
Oh, I am? Still? Well, when I went in to see Adam, I was ready to be a lot more aggressive. Adam was really kind and taking the time with me, calmed me down and be a little bit more rational, so thank you.
I have a quick question. Do you, I got the mic on. Do you think that we should involve town council at all? There are so many intricacies in what we've been walking through, and I don't feel comfortable with all of it, because in the grand picture, like you're saying, I can't get a grip on it. And, you know, I keep saying to myself, how many places in town are really available to make this work, this sort of thing? Is it reasonable to ask? Could he or he or she walk through what we've been doing to say this will, this makes sense, this doesn't? Rather than us sitting here and having it go way over our heads, is it worth getting involved sooner than later?
Yeah, I don't think town council would necessarily sit and say this will, you know, work from a planning perspective or not. They would say, you can legally request this or you can't legally request this. And typically, how that process would go is that we would put together what it is we hope to move forward to public hearing. And so then in the month between doing that and the public hearing, we would send it to town council for their review, and then at the public hearing, we would have their response. And if we needed to change things, we can make those changes at the first public hearing and then we can just host another public hearing.
All right.
But if there's something specific that you have concerns about, you know, certainly let me know and we can try to reach out, you know, beforehand. I think in the past, we've just tried to, you know, be somewhat efficient with the questions that we're sending to council, so that we kind of have them all, you know, ready to go in the end and don't have them reviewing the same thing, you know, multiple times, but.
If I can, we've been concentrating on workforce housing, but there's a lot of other types of housing that this town needs. And for example, the federal government has just come down and said to those people who are part of the CAP agency, that the CAP agency can no longer place people at motels and hotels for their housing.
What's CAP?
The CAP agency, like that we use.
I don't know what the acronym is.
The Tri-CAP.
Community Action Program.
Community Action Program. I'm sorry. And that means that right now, that there are five families in one of our hotels in our town that have one month to get out and find housing.
Good luck.
And one of those families has a student that attends our school district. And so I think that we have certainly a need for workforce housing, but we have a need also for other types of housing in this town. And how does that relate to the zoning that we're talking about, et cetera? And I just want to make sure that we don't rush into anything, that we make sure we carefully have good discussion to make sure that we're talking about all the housing needs that we need.
Thanks, David.
David, I'm glad you spoke up because reading through these 11 pages or whatever it is, it's a lot for us to absorb, not to mention the town. And when the crescenti property first came up and they wanted us to hurry up and change the zoning and all that, it was just too much. And this is almost too much, too. I'd like us to be more thoughtful. I don't think we're doing a bad job. I think we need to be as thoughtful as you're exhorting us to be.
Paul?
It's interesting that this is coming out, because I think in the format, it was somewhat difficult to really explain the apprehension or the, you know, to get down into the weeds of what it is. But I can just say that I share the feelings that have been expressed. Actually talked to Adam this week about that. And now I'm going to admit that I'm gone in December for the whole thing. But before I leave, I will try to put down in writing some ideas that I have, so that for whatever they're worth, you can share those. I'm not trying to hide it or anything like that.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else?
So just a reminder to folks, I am not here next week, so, but I will be back the Monday before we meet on that Thursday, so if anybody has questions or anything about housing stuff that they want to discuss before we meet, just get back to me after Thanksgiving and we can have those conversations.
Great. Anyone else have anything before we motion to adjourn? That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving.